I'd like to call this Planning Commission of January 23, 2018, to order. Roll call.
Chairman Cox.
Here.
Vice Chairman Rajarothnam.
Here.
Commissioner Yates.
Here.
Commissioner Ferris.
Here.
For present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Jessica, would you lead us in that?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a couple of items here. We have a couple of new staff members that I would like to have introduced not only to this group, to the commission, and to the public at large. And so, I would like to have our Public Works, our new Public Works Director, introduced. If he wouldn't mind, we can use this mic right here, sir. And so, Lauren Culp, if you would introduce him.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, I'm very happy to introduce Mr. Bard Lauer. He comes to us as our new Public Works Director, my new boss. He comes to us from El Dorado County. He's got his Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering, a Master of Science in Civil Engineering, has a law degree, and currently going after his Masters in, I think it's Construction Management, if I'm not mistaken.
It was Project Management, but that's kind of got put on the wayside.
So, he's got a ton of experience in Streets, in Asphalt Design for Streets, and very happy to have him aboard. Ton of experience, and nice to have a boss again.
Thank you. Bart, would you like to introduce yourself to us?
Sure. Although Lauren just stole all my thunder. But, no, my name is Bard Lauer. I'm now the new Public Works Director. This is my third week. Basically, the things I can say is that I've got about more than 40 years' experience in the public sector of transportation. I spent 27 years with the Michigan Department of Transportation, nine years with the city of Colorado Springs, and then four years with El Dorado County before coming here. I look very forward to, very much, let's see if I got that, I think I got that right finally, to working with the people here in the city, the different commissions and committees that I've been asked to work with, as well as the City Council. So, thank you. I appreciate being hired. I look forward to the work that's involved.
Well, thank you. We're really glad to have you here.
Thank you. However, like I was saying a second ago to you, I think that Lauren more than handles this, so I will come on occasion, but Lauren will be our representative when you guys meet.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it. Okay, so we have a new planner for the city, and I would like Penn to introduce him.
We have a new planner from the township of Montville, New Jersey. We're very, very fortunate to have him all the way out here in Ridgecrest with us. He has a Bachelor's in Environmental Science, I believe. A Bachelor's, I know that. So, he's been here for three weeks. He started on the same day as Bard, so we're very, very fortunate to have him here with us.
And his name?
And his name is Giancarlo Bruno.
Giancarlo, you want to?
The name is the important part, isn't it?
Well, my name's Giancarlo Bruno. I just, like Penn said, I just come here by way of Montville Township, New Jersey. And prior to that, I worked with the Say County, New Jersey Planning Department. I have a few years' background in the planning issues, and I hope to kind of facilitate a productive meetings of the commission and a productive discussion, have the members armed with the facts that they'll need to make a timely decision. And I hope I will serve those ends quite well. Thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for having me here tonight.
Thank you, Giancarlo. We have an approval of a new Commissioner from the City Council. We would like to do the swearing-in tonight, and Jess, if I get this wrong, Jessica Roberts Deahan. Okay. And that will be performed by our City Clerk.
I will state your name.
I, Jessica Roberts Deahan.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, since Jessica's new tonight, we'll put her in charge of the agenda.
Oh.
I'm just teasing you. So, we move on to Item 5, the Approval of the Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
As a move.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Chairman Cox.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Rajarothnam.
Aye.
Commissioner Yates.
Aye.
Commissioner Ferris.
Aye.
Do you want to, is it Deahan? Commissioner Deahan.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of our last meeting, and Jessica, since you weren't here, you won't know if they're true or not, so you can abstain. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
Chairman Cox.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Rajarothnam.
Aye.
Commissioner Yates.
Aye.
Commissioner Ferris.
Aye.
Commissioner Deahan.
Abstain.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Okay, the next item on our agenda, real quick, is Committee Assignments. We lost Commissioner Sanders, and so Jessica, we have some holes here. And if you would like to participate in any of these, we have Infrastructure, which is Councilman Mauer and Councilman Sand, or, I'm having a brain thing here tonight, Stevens and myself on. Would you like to serve on that?
Yes, but I am not able to do that time. I see on the agenda for it, there was a motion to push it back to five. If it gets pushed back, then I can. If not, then I would have to abstain from that one.
Okay. So, I think on our agenda is at 4:30, so I have no.
I know, I'm just.
And we used to be at five, Jessica, and we moved it up because of conflict for Commissioner Sanders, because he had another committee that he was involved with. So, for right now, we'll put you there, okay? We have a hole in Parks and Rec, Quality of Life or Economic Development.
I think I can do the Tuesday, the first Tuesday is the Parks and Rec one, correct? At four?
That's at four on the first Tuesday.
Yes, I can do that one. So, I can do those two, but I don't think I can do all three at this time.
So, we are going to be reconstituting the median art, and so that's Commissioner Rajarothnam and myself that are on that. We're still going to have a hole in Economic Development. Do we have any of the Commissioners that would like to participate in Economic Development?
What's the meeting time for that one?
5:00 PM on 2nd Wednesday.
I can do that one.
Okay. Cecil.
Since we're not, the other, the third one is not functioning right now.
And I think that you'll serve with Councilman Lindsey Stevens on that. Okay. So, I think that fills all of our gaps. Okay? Now, if there tends to be a hardship anytime, and we need to move some things around, that is fine. This is not a cast in stone, do or die. We'll make it work. The other thing that you find, if you can't make a meeting and it's crucial, you can't ask one of the other Commissioners. We just can't have three Commissioners there. So, okay. Moving on. Public comments of items not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the commission on matters that are within the commission's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to Brown Act, the Planning Commission may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Will open up public comment at this time?
I think I, is it this?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. My name is Bill Logan. I'm the pastor at Emmanuel Baptist Church. And I'm sorry to have to bring this to your attention, but we're very concerned about the driveway, the northeast driveway that we're going to be sharing with Starbucks very soon. This was a driveway, this was our largest driveway, that was 46 feet wide, and it was reduced to 20 feet in width this week, and we are disappointed that nobody came and talked to us. Pizza Hut had been using this driveway. We've had a great relationship with Pizza Hut, and we were excited about having a relationship with Starbucks as well. And we were well aware that the drive-through for Starbucks was going to be a lot more active once they moved there. And it is going to be very busy in the morning, in the morning hours. Starbucks will be very busy at 6:00 AM, and our families with the Child Development Center start dropping off children at 6:00, 8:00 AM as well. And those customers leaving the Starbucks drive-through specifically are going to be making a U-turn out of that driveway, primarily to go to, to head to the base from Ward. And that's going to require a lot of room for them to be making that U-turn. In our CDC families, a lot of them use that entrance as well, coming from the west as well as the east. And they have to come, some of them have to come from the west, or travel west to turn left into that driveway, because large vehicles can't make the U-turn at the corner of China Lake and Ward. And so, they come down Ward and turn left into that driveway. You know, I'm told, I was told today that 20 feet width is the regulation for commercial buildings, commercial properties, but our driveways on China Lake Boulevard are 27 feet in width. And 27 feet in width, it's kind of dicey when you have two large vehicles trying to navigate at the same time. So, we are requesting that the driveway be widened to at least 35 feet before Starbucks opens. This is going to be a very, this is going to be a big issue, because we have another easement driveway, the northwest driveway. That, the width of that driveway is 17 feet, and we don't even attempt to go into that driveway in the morning hours, because it, cars cannot, two cars cannot navigate. So, three more feet in width is not going to help things, especially when cars are having to make a U-turn. So, we ask that you seriously consider this, because it's going to be a serious issue.
Any questions from staff, from Commissioners? For him, for he lays? We can't act on it. I'm just wondering if you have any questions. So, isn't your north, I do, isn't your northwest driveway, isn't that a utility easement?
That's a utility easement, and that's 17 feet wide. And the west one, or the east one, is 20 feet wide.
Lauren, can you look at this? Can you look at this for him and get back to me, Monica?
Certainly, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment, things that are not on the agenda? Okay, moving on. Public hearing is SPR 18-01, request by KBN Properties LLC and Norma Ridgecrest Storage Partners to construct additional storage units located at 1430 North Norma Street, Staff report?
Yes, this is the third time this has come to Planning Commission. The first time was in August of last year, and then the second time was in September of last year, and they needed to make some changes to the original plans that were submitted due to, due to cost increase for the site plan that was submitted in September. It was over budget, so they submitted a new plan, and instead of the, instead of the hay parking, they are proposing to do DG for the large RV storage parking. So, you've seen all of this before, same location, same project site. But I'm going, I'm trying to get to their new plan. So, rather than, than four buildings, they're going, they're going to do three buildings and then increase the size of the RV parking. And that, that is what has been submitted. So, I want to hand it back to you.
Do we have a representative for this particular piece here tonight? We don't. Commissioners, I have some issues with this. I would want to share that I would be tempted to send this back to staff. We've seen this three times. In the conditions of this, we've talked about onsite water retention. Now, they've redrawn this map three times, and in this map, there is no place there that talks about water retention or size of water retention. In the conditions, if you go to the conditions, which is probably in your packet, page 15, it talks about, according to the municipal code, I think it's right at the back of the resolution, on four, it says, "RMC Chapter 20-20.1 requires all parking areas to be concrete or asphalt." Now, we've heard it two other times, and they know this, and each time, they haven't put it on the map, and each time, they're trying to downplay it. In our resolution, in the recommendation, if you look at the very first page of the recommendation, it comes through and gives a description, and it says that the building totaling is 15,005.28 square feet, and the parking area is going to be 62,366 square feet, and they're stating decomposed granite. My proposal is, is that in the recommendation, we don't recommend decomposed granite. In the draft resolution, same thing, take out the decomposed granite and just say parking area in the legal language. And the findings in Section 1 says the same thing, decomposed granite. I propose that that is taken out if approved. If you come down to Section 3, Description, it comes down, decomposed granite. So, in each one of those, this has been inherited by previous staff, so we don't want to beat our staff up at all. If you decide that you want to approve this with the questions that you may or may not have, there are some corrections that need to be made. But truthfully, personally, I would rather send this back to staff, and they can send it to them, because they need to show the engineering department what their water retention is, where it is, make sure it meets the standard. It's one thing to state it in a resolution that says, yeah, we're going to require that, but maybe they ought to show it to us before we approve a map. And then, the language change in the resolution. So, I'm okay either way, whether we approve it or not, approve it with those changes, or we send it back to staff and have them give us additional information. I did talk to the city engineer, and of course, the conditions of our approval, which we have given each time, is the same, but I don't want to be misleading at all to where once it's straw, now it's decomposed granite. No, the requirement is concrete or asphalt. So, we take that out of the approval of the resolution. So, that's the information I have on this particular one. Are there any questions that you might have for staff?
Did we already share with them that it had to be asphalt or concrete?
Yes.
Okay.
Twice.
I'm trying to wonder why this, why this decomposed granite even made it in the resolution there.
That was part of the plans that they submitted when they resubmitted this, and that was the explanation given to me.
So, remember at our last meeting, when we approved it, and we talked about the straw, we brought out that these were the requirements at the end of the resolution, that they were required. So, they've gone to the expense and effort of redrawing this, but yet, they haven't taken into consideration the things that we've asked them to do. And, and so, I'm hesitant to approve something, even though we can condition it, when they haven't done their part. Any other comments from Commissioners?
I mean, it looks like they are not in a hurry, so we can send it back to them and redo everything so that we can approve as per our requirement. I mean, the fact that there is no representative shows that they are not showing interest in this, not ready to address these issues. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments? Okay, Jessica, I can see the smile on your. You don't have to make comments, it's just if you have thoughts or concerns.
Since it's my first time here, could you explain to me the reasoning of why it must be concrete or asphalt?
Well, that's part of the municipal code. And so, that would, and the best thing to do when you have a question like that, is let's ask the city engineer to come up and ask him that question. Okay? Would you come up, Lauren?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, the requirements for this type of improvement are in the Chapter 20 of the zoning code, and generally, the, well, I should say more specifically, the municipal code does call for improvements to the, any area that is a parking area, and it does specify that it be a paved surface, either be an asphalt or concrete, but a hard surface improvement. And so, by that being an ordinance, we're required to follow that by ordinance, and if the applicant wishes to make an appeal, they can certainly appeal that, but only the, the City Council would be able to offer any consideration or waiver of that requirement.
And they've made no appeal thus far?
No, they have not.
Okay.
Any other thoughts? Jessica?
No.
Any other comments from the Commissioners?
Thank you.
Well, let's wait a minute. We'll turn it over to the public. Do we have public comment?
I have a question on one item. Peggy Breeden, 825 Sonja. I've attended, I think, every Planning Commission meeting for the past three or four years, and I don't believe I've ever seen this comment from the Kern County Fire Department on the report. It's on page 13 of your agenda, and I'm not questioning it much, as I'm trying to understand why it's there, if there's any significance there, and what it means, why I haven't seen it before, and if I have seen it, my apologies to you all. Just an explanation is required. Thank you.
Lauren, you want to explain that?
Well, I can tell you that I don't have that condition in front of me to be able to offer you any kind of explanation on that. The, I wasn't able to download the agenda off of the city website.
Thank you, Peggy.
And the condition states, a clearance from Kern County Fire Department may be required prior to occupancy. And, well, certainly whenever there's a permit that's issued for any structure, the Kern County Fire Department will evaluate that as a part of the plan check process for any structure, and they will determine, and, they'll determine what sort of fire protection requirements are necessary, whether it be a water line extension with fire hydrants or the structure be sprinkled with fire detector checks and so forth. So, the, the condition is a condition in general, just to ensure that the applicant is aware that there will be a review by the Fire Department and potentially conditions for fire protection for any of the structures on the site.
Thank you.
Is there something extraordinary?
No. No, actually, when.
I wonder why I haven't seen it before, and if I did, just tell me it's on all of them.
Well, it isn't on all of them. There, the standard of practice is to, whenever there's an application submitted, to submit the application to all agencies to have them review. If you have a project that's along the Caltrans right-of-way, we submit the application to Caltrans for them to look at to determine what might be necessary for supporting or requirements for drainage or access to state highway. If there's a project that, that, any, any agency that has any involvement in conditioning land use, those agencies are given a copy of that application, and they are asked or solicited for comments, and to advise that applicant of what sort of requirements may be necessary. And, and sometimes, I've seen past agenda packets where that may not have happened, but it is a standard of practice to, to send out applications to all agencies that might have some authority over land use requirements.
It was on the one that we did for the hospital in November, for the parking and the new emergency room, the helipad, so on and so forth. It was on that one as well, in November.
Most of the time, you'll see it with a structure, you know, which, which would relate, it's like, we're not going to give. It's like, we're not going to give somebody a certificate of occupation on a home that we built for them. Same with the commercial building or a commercial extension. In this case, it's a commercial extension.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Okay, so I need a recommendation from the commission. Are there any other questions or comments from the public before I move forward? Any other comments from the commission? My recommendation is we send it back to staff so that they can show us these things and the resolution be corrected. So do I have a second on that?
I have a second.
Okay, so we're going to send that back to staff for those things. All right, moving forward. On item 10, we have a...
Commissioner? Are we going to vote?
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Raj Rautnem?
I'm staying.
Commissioner Yates?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferris?
Aye.
Commissioner DeHaan?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Thank you, Heather.
Heather, did you get all those changes?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on to item 10, discussion action items. Tentative track map 6633, extension request to extend the approval of tentative track map number 6633. Has 59 residential lots, subdivision of five parcels totaling 15.94 acres located in an R1 zone on the southwest corner of West Raider Avenue and Sunset Street. Staff report?
Essentially, this is a, first time that this extension has come in before you since the track map was originally approved in 2006. And essentially, it's just a single-family residential subdivision. And there's no changes being proposed. It has been kept alive through actions of the state assembly and the state senate up until November 2017. October 2017, they requested an extension before it expired. And we have now placed it on the agenda to be considered by the commissioners.
Commissioner comments?
I have one question. I don't know if John Carlo can answer it.
I will do my own as best.
Okay. When we approve of a tentative track map, how long normally does that stay in the system with that approval before it has to come back, before the commission, prior to them doing what it was approved for?
Do you want to answer?
Yes, I'd be happy to answer that. Per 19-3.2F of the Ridgecrest Municipal Code, tentative track map was in effect for 36 months, unless extended. The planning commission, at its discretion, can extend in one-year intervals up to three years, but that doesn't account for the actions of the state government.
And you stated this is the first time it's coming back since the approval in 2006? Is that, did I hear that right?
Yes. This is the first time that the planning commission itself has had the chance to consider an extension. The rest was done by acts of state government.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commissioners?
I have a general comment on all these track maps which we have here. Are they ever going to build, or are we going, keep on extending these things forever? Or do we, is there an end to this, or do we know anything about that?
We would like to see an end to these extensions. However, that is outside of our control, so it is zoned as it is. And we will, this will be the last extension, I believe, for this particular lot.
So as per the code, we can extend one year at a time for three years. So after that, what happens? I mean hypothetically?
No, we don't have to extend it. We can extend it. Typically, you'll have 18 months. When they get an approval, they'll have 18 months, and then we can extend it a year at a time, up to three years. Now, we can go beyond if we so choose, but there should be an expiration at some point if there's not a good faith effort to proceed. So they come in with a tentative track map, but if they're not going to proceed, because the municipal code changes, the requirements of the city change, they need to bring it back, take it through engineering again so that it meets our current plan. Now, in some instances, some of these are meeting our current plan, but some are not. And so, yeah, this is old business that we need to take care of. And it doesn't mean you just take a broad brush. You can look at each one as an individual case and decide what you want to do with it. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Also, I wanted to ask, being that, you know, there's a couple more that we have to deal with, have these all been vetted before the changes that have occurred in the municipal code as per when they were approved? Because we've had some changes such as the water and landscape.
That's a broad brush, so let's just stick to this tract.
Okay.
Okay, so it's a valid question, but you're going to have to ask it on each one? Okay, so let's stick just to this tract for right now. Questions that you might have about this tract?
Okay, so I guess my question would be, has this particular tentative map been vetted before the changes that have occurred in the municipal code up to date?
It has not been amended to reflect the 2009 general plan amendments. So it stands just as it was in 2006, when it was originally brought before the commission.
There are some additions. Okay, and so we talk about them almost every commission meeting. One of the requirements that we have is any new subdivision shall provide some for pocket parks. Okay, now, one of the things that we as the commission have to deal with, we get direction from the city council, but we also have had presentations by the Navy in our council meetings where they're interested in the quality of life. So now, it is a requirement that we do water retention in our subdivisions so that we're not pouring our water onto our neighbor. And in the past, we've had some developments that have come through that didn't do that. And so we're having to catch up and correct some of that. But these are the things that the city council and previous planning commissions have decided that they wanted to put into the code. And so it doesn't mean they can't build, and it doesn't mean that they can't bring it back. But in this particular case, there's two things that hit there. One of the recommendations to developers is that they don't do cookie cutter type lots. In other words, everything's the same lot. It's a recommendation, doesn't have to be. And in this particular flat map, everything is just kind of square and the same type of thing. So it's a recommendation, because that also adds to the beautification of a development, but it does not have some for a pocket park in it. So to extend it, it does not meet our current requirement. And so they've been, they've been given a stay by the state, but that stay is now come and gone. So 12 years later, does the commission want to extend it?
That's my question.
Or do we want them to redesign it and bring it back for a new approval? Any other questions from the commissioners?
By having them bring it back, will that maybe increase the rate in which this would actually be developed?
Yeah, it's a cost thing, you know? In order to bring it back, they're going to have to re-engineer it because they would take a lot or two to accomplish the hydrology report that the city engineer is going to require. And so those are the things that we would have to see to approve a tentative track map. And so to kick it down the road, it's still tentative. We can condition it and say it's required to da-da-da-da-da-da, and kick it down the road and condition it. But truthfully, they're going to have to do that engineering anyway. And so they still own the land, they can still develop, but they're still going to have to do the engineering one way or the other. So do you want to extend it? Or do you want to, you know, by conditioning it? Or do you want to let it expire and they can bring it back to us at some point when they're ready to develop?
If we were to extend this tonight, would they have to come back before the commission, prior to building?
Well, it's still tentative, so, you know, they have to meet the conditions, so...
So yes, it'll be heard again. It has to come back before anyway.
Correct.
They will need to meet the conditions prior to filing the final map. However, it should be noted that in the case of an extension, you can't introduce brand-new conditions. It's either you're extending what exists, what stands, or you're choosing not to.
But the question is, do they need to come back to us again?
Yes.
To actually start construction, would they have to come back before the commission? Yeah. I just want, I get confused about that.
Mr. Carl?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I might be able to help you out with that. If you approve this tentative map tonight, there will be no further requirements for them to go before the commission. This tentative map was approved at a time prior to your approval of the general plan. So this tentative map currently does not contain the design elements and requirements that the current general plan requires. So it is quite dated. There are certain engineering features that have not been conditioned for this project as well, such as the drainage retention requirements. There is no sum or anything to address the retention requirements. Additionally, the tentative map, I believe, had another action for a phased map. And so I am uncertain whether this tentative map was even presented to you as a phased tentative map. If you approve this tentative map tonight, the developer, in order to finalize this map, would be required to post a bond for all of the improvements, for all of the off-site improvements, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and street improvements. And he would be required to record the map as one and be responsible for those improvements for the entire development. Versus a phased development, he would be able to do smaller portions of the tract development and only bond for a portion of those improvements. So as is, it would be quite a burden to a developer to have this tentative map approved in whole and require a bond for the finalization of that map versus a phased map. And again, also the fact that it does not meet the current design requirements that is in place, that the commission is required to uphold in your general plan. So there are some difficulties here with the approval of this tentative map.
So just so I understand, you're saying that if it's approved now in whole, as extended, it would be more burdensome for the developer to make additions and changes on the plan as a whole later on versus if we were to kick it back now and then he has to by phase go with that? You're saying that would be less of a burden?
Yes. In today's economy, and Mr. Raj Rautnem, you might be able to help me on this, but I understand that there's really only a certain limit to what banks are willing to lend on housing developments. In other words, they don't want to lend on a large development for fear that there'd be, the market might not bear that construction. So there's some liability there. So the developers currently like to develop in phases. They don't have as much exposure. They can build to the market. And so it works out better for them in obtaining loans for their... Now, if they have cash, of course, that's not a problem for them. But generally, there's financing involved, and banks tend to try to be very conservative in lending on developments. So what we see currently are phased maps.
So when this first came to us, was it phased map, or...
No.
Did we approve a phased map?
No, actually, there was a phased map that was proposed. And I can tell you that in the picture there also shows it. There was a, nine lots that were proposed and started without benefit of a bond. And if you go out there now, there's curb and gutter and utility trenches across Raider there, where the developer started his improvements and did not complete them. So you have an incomplete street with curb and gutter, utility stubbed out, and incomplete utility trenches. So you have a good example there where a developer started, was unsuccessful, and has left the site with incomplete improvements on the street and in the right-of-way.
So this approval which came to us now, it's not just extension of the original one, it's a modification of the original plan, right?
It's my understanding that this is a tentative map in whole, if I'm not mistaken. Now, I don't have the packet here in front of me, but if it is submitted as a phased map, that's a different subject. That would require an amendment to the tentative map. There's an amendment process if you intend to do a phased development. If this is submitted as a map in whole, in order to finalize this map, the developer would have to post an improvement security for the entire street improvements, all the off-site improvements. And that can be burdensome.
For the commission, be mindful, in the resolution, you should read the resolutions, okay? And a lot of times, we're just taking the existing one, which is 12 years old. There are things that says tentative parcel map 6633 is consistent with the applicable general plan in that its general plan designates the area to be used for low density, which it does, residential family homes, land use, and the map is compatible with objectives, policies, uses, and programs. Okay? So truthfully on this, my recommendation from me would be to let it expire. But if you have questions for the engineer, and if we have public comment, that's something else. But I think that this needs to come back as it meets the requirements that are stated in our municipal code. And that way, we're not trying to fix 12-year-old problems. Any other comment from commissioners? Any comment from the public?
Hello, my name is Pat Getusky. I'm the owner of the tentative track map.
Okay. Welcome.
Oh, we're trying to get it, um, re-engineered, well, we have to get it engineered to, like Lauren said, for bonding and all this stuff. This is my... This is my, I'm a real estate agent.
Hank Upperhart Cole of Anker.
And, uh, we're, we're doing the best we can. I just, I just hope you would change your mind and approve it.
Thank you.
Something you need to consider is there's a deficiency of homes in Richcrest, and this, this map is, and this development is not too far from getting a builder to come to the area and do something.
Yeah.
At this time, I'm only aware of two builders, one doing business in College Heights and the other in various other parts of Richcrest. So, think, think about that.
Thank you. Any other public comment? One other comment for the commissioners. OSC 7-19 parks and new subdivisions, the city shall require developers to include recreational assets in all new residential developments and incorporated shallow sums detention basins that should be used for recreational purposes. This, this is, my recommendation is not intended to hurt a developer, other than that has to be redesigned to meet the requirements that are in the municipal code. And so, that's all I have. Any other comment from the commission? So, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to send it back for revisions and come up with a new tentative tract.
I think the only thing that we can do, Lauren or Ken, is that we either approve it or we, we deny it. We either extend it or we don't.
The, the MAP Act indicates that you can approve, conditionally approve, or reject the, the map.
So, if you're approving, you're approving the resolution as it's written because we can't rewrite it, or you don't extend it. It doesn't mean they can't develop it, it doesn't mean that it changes anything, they just have to bring it up to current.
Right.
So, back, do I have a motion?
I'm sorry, question. What was the option for a conditional approval you mentioned, Mr. Cox?
Yes, and the conditional approval would be anything that, well, it, I might want to retract that or restate that. In a tentative map that's for an extension, additional conditions cannot be imposed.
Okay.
It's if the, if it were a new map, then the actions available to the commission is to approve, conditionally approve, or deny the tentative map.
But not for an extension, you're saying? Okay, thank you.
We can't, we can't change the verbiage because it was already approved. All we have, all we have before us is to deal, do we approve the extension or do we let it expire?
I make a motion to deny the extension.
I second.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Roz Rotnum?
Aye.
Commissioner Yates?
Abstain.
Commissioner Ferris?
Aye.
Commissioner DeHaan?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Lauren, don't go anywhere. We've got four more of these. Okay, moving on to B item, tentative tract map 6775, extension request by Cornerstone Engineering on behalf of North Star IRA Partners for an extension of tract 6775, APN 510-01018, located at the southwest corner of China Lake Boulevard, Boulevard and Springer Street. Staff report.
This is a larger, lower-density subdivision, as you said, at the corner of College Heights Boulevard and, and, I'm sorry, Springer Avenue. It's mostly surrounded by vacant land. The recently completed, or I believe it might be partially complete, D.R. Horton Home Subdivision, formerly known as tentative tract map 6740, lies to the south, and then you have some sparse residential uses surrounding. It was, did go through the environmental review back in 2006 when this originally appeared, and this is very much the same story as the last tract map in that it has, during most of that time, been kept alive by actions of the state government. This is the tract map itself, yes.
So, you're going to have to turn around and look at this one. I'm not sure this one's in your packet. On the back? What page?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. So, we have a representative of Cornerstone Engineering here. Commissioner comments on this for staff? Okay, so, to, to save your time, maybe, if it's okay with the commission, we have two of them sitting here on this agenda that are part of the same project, which is 6700 and 6775. Is that not correct, sir?
That is correct.
Okay. So, the question that we have, this was brought to us a couple of years ago, as my memory serves me, and there, we talked about a sump park, and the comment was, was made because of the drainage coming off from the existing subdivisions, which they were not required to, at the time, to hold their own water. It's, it's coming down, and it precludes doing a sump park on, on one of these maps. Now, if, if I remember right, this cutout, sir, on this particular map, that is a catch basin in the center there, is that not?
Believe so.
Okay. I also believe that history would tell me that particular piece can't be developed because it's over an old dump. Is, is that the piece?
I don't know. I'm worn my tongue.
Yes, that is owned by the county. That is what's known as the burn dump.
So, so the question on both of these phases, and John Carlos can show us both maps, but we have pictures of them here. What is the plan for the developer? The developer's actually asking for a year extension, and, and so, coming back to the same issue, water retention and sump park or pocket parks, because on one of them, you have a sump, but two years ago, the, the requirement from the planning commission was that it was a sump park, or the discussion was sump park. So, either the engineer can correct my memory, or you can tell us what the developer's intent is.
I believe at this time, our intent is to, one of the, one of the issues here is this is a tentative map, and it's going, regardless of what we do here tonight, we're going to, city staff will be making comments on it, and if it's going to be, and if the drainage situation is such now that a sump park will not work, then we would probably work with city staff to find a solution that will work that's within the bounds of the current requirements. The, the, believe the one, the one to the north had the sump park, and believe the other one was adjacent to the future alignment of the Bowman Wash, is that correct? And I believe that was the reason we were not doing the sump park in the second one, because we were, we were going to do the sump on the, on the Bowman Wash side with the understanding that when that, when the Bowman Wash developed out into a full-blown drainage channel, we would be allowed to drain there.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Mr. Cox, please.
Yes, I might be able to shed some light on this. Currently, if you look, this is a phased map, and Phase 1 has been finalized. We have a final map on Phase 1. So, we, we do have a, one of these phases that has gone through a final map process. They have posted the improvement security, the improvements are installed, and they can enjoy land sales and, and development. This particular tract is also included within the lighting landscaping maintenance district that we have. They are currently being assessed for the landscaping that's, that's along Kendall and along College Heights, which was our original lighting landscaping maintenance district. There's also a current, a benefit assessment district for the sump and the park that is a part of the adjoining tract. The other one that you're going to look at tonight is 6700. So, they are currently annexed into assessment districts for lighting landscaping, as well as a benefit assessment district for the sump and the park. That's a part of the adjoining tract.
And it's...
And they're currently underway.
That is correct. This is one that is moving.
This is now owned by Stephen Hare. Stephen Hare acquired this from D.R. Horton, and Tom Martin, I think, was the owner of this, and acquired it from him. The conditions of approval for these tracks are current. The conditions that you see are for phased development, and this, these, these tracks do comply to the current general plan requirements that you have. So, these are much more current, and they have been conditioned relative to current municipal code and, and general plan requirements, and, and actively in assessment districts for lighting landscaping, as well as drainage benefited districts, drainage benefit assessments.
So, on 6775, the, the assessment is, is a neighboring park? They're, they're going to be part of that neighboring park?
Yes, they are.
And their water retention is going to be where?
As well as drainage, yes.
As well as drainage?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you're speaking to both 775 and 700 as being current with the municipal code?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Any questions for Cornerstone? I would recommend we give them their extension.
I, I would have one request. There are some, there is a typo in 6775, section 1, part H.
In the resolution?
Yes. I just ask that it be corrected to the resolution, it should be 1508, and the tract map number corrected to 6775. Believe it was just copied from the, the, the resolution that was created for 6775.
Is this on the tract map 6700 or on the 6775?
6775. There's just a typo in that, that paragraph H, section 1.
Do you have that down? Okay.
It's supposed to read, "Planning Resolution 1508," was the resolution that was the original approved under, "Conditionally approving amended tentative tract map number 6775."
Yep.
I believe it was, it was a cut-and-paste error from the 6770, or 6700. That's the only request for requesting.
So, any other questions from the commission? If not, I'd move that we extend both of these with that typo correction. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Roz Rotnum?
Aye.
Commissioner Yates?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferris?
Aye.
Commissioner DeHaan?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, so that's going to be both on TTM 6700 and 6676. Okay. So, I just want to make sure the vote was for both of those.
I thought it was 6700 and 6775.
6775 and 6700, you're correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I notice in the resolutions that they do not indicate phased maps. And it's very important that the commission approve a phased map. Now, I see the exhibits indicate phased maps and the tentative maps indicate, but I'd suggest that the resolution clearly identify these as phased tentative maps. Makes, makes a big difference.
I so move. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Roz Rotnum?
Aye.
Commissioner Yates?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferris?
Aye.
Commissioner DeHaan?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to tentative tract map 6676, extension request for Cornerstone Engineering on behalf of Pam Richcrest Venture LLC for an extension of tract 6676, APN 343-07034, located on the southwest corner of Gateway and Upjohn.
This is a, another single-family subdivision from several years back that has been kept alive and is now at the end of its extended life per state government interventions. So, it's surrounded by a combination of other single-family uses and vacant land, and it is a phased map. All right, I apologize, it does not appear that this particular one is phased, though. But it is a 75-lot subdivision, and as you can see, they have provided onsite drainage that I believe can...
Okay, you'll have to speak up for us to hear, as well as the home audience.
They have provided some onsite detention as well in this case.
Okay, so I noticed in the, in the staff report, it's 6676 and 6679 together. So, are we considering these as separate entities or are together?
The applicant in, in both cases is the same, and the developer, I feel that they, they are very much related, though it, I do think it would probably be appropriate to consider them separately as the resolutions have, as the separate resolutions should reflect.
Thank you.
Draft resolutions, I...
Thank you. I have a question for Cornerstone?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I noticed on 6676, we have a sump park here.
That is correct.
Okay. I don't see a map in our presentation here for 6676, but in reading through it, I don't think that there is a sump park in that one. Can you enlighten us?
I don't recall, sir. If it's one of those situations to where the current requirement from the city would be for retention on the site, because this is not a vested map, that requirement can be laid on it, not at this time, though, because we're looking at extension. But at a future meeting, at a future meeting, that could be revisited if staff recommends.
So, in my reading on this, we have an 11-year-old plat map?
That is correct. Pam is currently working, is, is one of the developers working in town, and this is one of their assets they're maintaining to ensure they have future work.
Okay. Lauren, where I don't have a map for 6676... Lauren, where I don't have a map for 6676 showing water retention or a sump park or a pocket park, can you tell me anything about 6676 other than what I've read?
I'm afraid I cannot. This was conditioned before my time. And looking through the conditions, I see that they are not current conditions. However, I do believe that this map was approved at the time in which your general plan was in action or adopted, so they would have to comply to the general plan requirements. But I'm afraid I do not see a map either. I see one illustrated on the large screen there, but I'm afraid I'm at a loss to be able to offer any detail.
Okay. Commissioner comments? So, on both of these, we have another 11 years on both of these. In some cases, it's showing it has current stuff, but once again, we cannot, because it's already been approved, we cannot condition it. If it was brought to us as a new track map, we could condition it. So, any questions you have for Cornerstone or for staff?
Was 6676 a phased map or no?
I believe it would be, given the size of it. I did see in your packet, 6679, the other one, is indicated as a phased map. This, I can't precisely say it was, but given the practices of this developer, it would have, they would typically work with phased maps.
Yeah, so 79 is phased, but we don't have the map on.
Mr. Chairman, the map that's demonstrated on the large screen there does not indicate any phasing, indicates the total of 75 lots.
In our packet it does, Lauren.
Oh, there is a phased map, 79. Well, this is 6676 on the screen here.
Okay.
And that does not indicate any kind of phasing. I do recognize that 6679 does identify phasing. I don't see that in the resolution, however. But this map would require the developer to post an improvement security for all the improvements there.
That becomes pretty cost prohibitive in this damage.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I believe we would, if, I know we can't ask for this, but we would like it to be phased.
But we can't condition that.
That is correct.
We can either extend it or not extend it.
That is correct.
And I believe the other tract, it shows the phases, it shows the water retention, the pocket park. I think that could be extended. I think this one's going to have to come back to us.
Sir, I would point out that the expiration date on these maps is February, February 14th, and our client made a good face effort to get on the agenda and to comply with requests of the city. And we would request that, because we've put forth the effort to make, to come to it, we're willing to work with you on this map moving forward, understanding this is not a vested map, so that the conditions can be revisited, just not at this time.
Can we legally, as a commission, give them a 30-day extension so they can come in and show phasing? Or is that a new approval?
Well, if they come back with an amended map, it opens it up for conditions of approval.
So, we can't approve that one, even though you maybe do phasing. If I sign that, he has to bond the whole thing.
That is correct. So, as it is now, you would have to approve the whole map, not a phased map.
All right. So, let's take these one at a time, commission. 6676, which is not phased. So, staff has recommended approval, I'm recommending to let it expire. And so, I would make a motion that we let this one expire.
Second.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Rajaratnam?
Aye.
Commissioner Yates?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferris?
Aye.
Commissioner DeHaan?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, so we've had discussion. We now have 6679 before us, which is phased and meets the requirements as per the city engineer. I would move that we give them the extension on this one.
I'll second.
Commissioner Cox?
Excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
I would recommend, in the actual resolution, that you specifically state a phased tentative map. I don't see the word phasing in there, so I would recommend, even though the exhibit does show that, it's very important that the records show that it is being approved by the commission as a phased tentative map.
Thank you. So moved that we make that change. Need a second?
I'll second with the change.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Rajaratnam?
Aye.
Commissioner Yates?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferris?
Aye.
Commissioner DeHaan?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to commissioner items and comments. Committee reports. Anybody that's had any committee? I don't think we had any committee since our last one, did we?
We had City Org.
Over the holidays?
City Org.
Okay.
One of the key items on our agenda, we discussed adding an amendment to the nomination package to run for city council that states, I don't remember the exact verbiage, but it states that your residents having to be within the city limits.
Primary residence.
Well, there was certain verbiage talking about your domicile, so it had to be where you received your mail, so on and so forth. So, that was one of the key items. And we also revisited the four projects once again. I don't, what else did we talk about? Those were the two elephants, yes. Good meeting.
Sir, are we still doing reports on it? The attorney's getting back to you. Was there a motion to approve?
Are you talking about the four projects?
Well, any of it.
Well, the four projects, we were.
The change in the municipal code or?
We didn't talk about any change in the municipal code. I think for the nomination package and dealing with the residents, it was just a matter of saying, "We agree to put that in the package." And I couldn't remember if it has to go to city council or not. I don't think it does. It's just some verbiage they add to the package.
It's like an explanation of residency.
Right. Okay. Ron Strand briefed, was trying to brief the, help Mike Sannott understand with the four projects, the involvement of the city has to be paired with the involvement of the county. So, that was.
And BLM.
And BLM. And then, I mean, he did some good things. He did a lot of homework, and he went to a grant writing class and everything, but it's all for naught if you don't get those other two entities involved. We can't do anything that their suggestion on the four projects without their support. So, those were the two big items in our meeting.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Economic Development, we met, discussed a economic development consultant, a community website with Community Calendar, and it looks like that should be up and going by May.
That was approved, if I remember, wasn't it?
I'm sure Penn can probably speak better on this.
Economic Development Consultant.
The Community Calendar and website.
Yes, the Community Calendar and website. We are getting quotes for consultants who can put a website together for us. And the ED consultant, we are also, I'm also taking quotes on that, so we should be rebooting there before we go to ICSC in Las Vegas in May.
Is that it?
Did I hear her say she needs some planning commissioners to go to Las Vegas in May?
Yes. You all are part of economic development.
I just wanted to make sure.
Planning is a central part of economic development, so yes.
Thank you.
Your room is a tent in the parking lot.
I believe Bill Ferris Jr. would like to ride with me in the Prius again.
That's funny. Okay. Commissioner comments? We'll start with our newest commissioner. Do you have any comments that you would?
No, this is a learning process for me, and I'm glad to be here. Thank you.
We're glad you're here. Mr. Ferris?
Welcome to our new commissioner. Also, tomorrow is the closing ceremony of Remember the Fallen over here in Kermit's Center, and if you have the opportunity to go check that out, it's very powerful and very moving, so I suggest everybody take that opportunity.
What time is that?
Six o'clock, I believe.
Tomorrow.
Six o'clock. Correct.
That's it? Cecil?
I too wanted to welcome, I think I wrote this down right, Jessica to the planning commission. One day at a time, you'll get the hang of it. And I didn't catch the name, I didn't write it down, the name of Bart? Bard? And his last name? Wanted to welcome him to the staff. And that's about it.
Thank you.
I did have comments, and also want to welcome John Call for a customer. You did a good job, so thank you very much. Come on, I'm talking.
Ditto. Right in front of me.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. So, one thing that I'm working on here is for Solomon and I, the Fourth Wednesday is open for immediate art. Is that a day that's available for you? That's when the room is open. He's checking. So, I too would like to welcome not only the two new staffers, but also our newest commissioner. And yeah, you kind of get the hang of it, but always feel like if something's not sitting right, or you're not quite sure, that's what these people are here for, your staff, to help you understand. And they are a super resource. Be mindful also, as a commissioner, you don't have to save your questions for here. If you're reading the report and you have a question, you need to talk to the engineer or Penn or John Carlos, or I need a clarification, you know, feel free to contact them and ask your questions. That way, you're prepared with your notes on the agenda. If you feel like you got a grasp, that's cool, too. But they're here to help you, because we're representing the community and the city council. And so, we need to make sure our decisions are there. The only other comment that I would like to bring out is, there was an article in the paper where our city manager talked to one of our clubs, and he talked about quality of life. And so, when things come before us, we need to be very mindful of quality of life. This is something that the city council is promoting, it's what our city manager is promoting, and things that will benefit our community. And so, sometimes it's not always black and white, and so, we need to be able to bring all of our individual life experience to this, to bring up things that maybe somebody else hasn't thought of. And so, we're not a cookie cutter, or we're not just a rubber stamp for what the staff brings us. And so, many times, we rely on them, but there's times when we've modified it, too. So, we're grateful, I am grateful for Jessica and our paper that comes and reports on our hearings here. I'm thankful for our staff and their extra time and effort that they come and provide for us to help keep us straight. I'm thankful for the time the attorneys give us. They're not here, but they are with the council and going over these resolutions. So, I'm grateful for that, and I want to acknowledge them. Future agenda items for me, and if there's anything that you guys have, is I would like to have a report each month on future items that are coming, things that you're working on, things that we've already heard and are still in the works, such as Walmart, Starbucks, other things that are going on, so that the planning commission can keep abreast of where the city is moving. And so, you can place that in the agenda at an appropriate place, probably in this section, because that eliminates any of the public to have to stay. But that way, we can keep up on what's happened a year ago or two years ago, especially with new commissioners. I wasn't here for that, but they'll at least know what's going on. So, that's what I'd like to see for future agenda items. And for our new staffers, also be mindful that if you paid attention to the questions that the commission asked tonight, the concerns that they might have, those are the kind of things that you want to incorporate into your staff reports, so you can anticipate they're going to ask about this, or this, or this. One comment I did make is, let's not just automatically approve, you know, recommendation that we extend this. If it doesn't make sense, that doesn't have to be your recommendation. So, we're going to decide ourselves. It doesn't have to be an automatic recommendation to approve an extension. So, that's all I have for future agenda items. Any of the commissioners have anything?
You said once a month for?
Well, every time we have a meeting.
Yeah.
Don't we meet once a month?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other future agenda items from the commission? I would say no. So, we have staff items, Lauren?
One of my requirements as a city engineer is to give the planning commission reports on projects. I'd like to come back at the next meeting in February to give you a comprehensive report on all of our projects, both private and public works. I can give you a quick rundown of what we have on the front burner now. We do have an emergency street or an emergency repair on a moratorium street on Hermosa right now, Southern California S, and had an outage on our primary circuit, which required them to install an emergency generator for several residents along Hermosa. And so, Herman Weizacher is out there, they'll be out there approximately a week doing, installing a new conduit and pulling conductor for their primary conductor in that area. Also, I've got 100% complete plans now on the senior center. That's a CDBG project. What we're awaiting now is the funding, the financial portion of that. The county will be preparing an agreement and a schedule for the financing for the actual construction work. That'll go before our city council. It then goes back to county council, and of course, legal staff has to review that. It's not a timely process, but we do have 100% complete plans and specifications for that project. Now, we're just in the portion of receiving approval from the county for the financing of the construction end of things. We do have 100% complete plans on our ADA improvements along Richcrest Boulevard. We will be putting that out to bid very shortly. We're approximately 80% complete on our improvements to the senior center. We're approximately 80% complete on our improvements to the senior center parking lot. We did have a meeting today. Public work staff did meet with American Pavement Systems, who made a presentation on rubberized asphalt materials. We're kind of excited about what they're telling us about the longevity of that type of product and its ability to offer a better ride quality as well as more longevity in some of the maintenance products that we've been trying. So we're very excited to try that. We're looking now at our capital improvement program for our streets. I'll be able to report to you what streets we plan to attack for this next paving season. So anyway, this next meeting, I'll have a much more comprehensive report for you on our capital improvement projects as well as private projects.
Thank you, Lauren. Any of the other staff, John Carlos, Penn? Any comments? Okay. All right. Having said that, again, thanks, commissioners, for your service. And we will close to this meeting at 7:32.